I'm going to call this September 12th meeting of the county council order. Let's start with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't think we, do we have any special speakers? I didn't see any on the list and I don't see Tony or Roger out there who are often here. And we have no mayoral presentations, I don't think, tonight?
No, sir.
All right. Approval of the minutes of August 1st and the closed minutes.
I'll submit the minutes that we received as they stand.
All right, I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I don't see any of the resident troopers. I do see our chief.
Start with, provide the chief's report. I did provide everybody a copy for their packets there. I hope everybody's received it. Just to basically recap everything, over the course of the month of August, I've attended approximately sixteen different meetings. Those meetings considered facilities management, needs assessments, purchase of capital, equipment, patrol vehicles, and the upfitting, hiring, also outreach and networking with other agencies. I attended a couple civic meetings and events, listening to the concerns of our citizens. We conducted interviews for our police services administrator's position. A conditional offer of employment has been offered and accepted. We're in the process at this time for the background investigation. Also conducted research and gathered information on capital, equipment, and so forth. Additional work is continuing in finalizing our temporary location for our station. Also working with our facilities management team on a permanent location. Also in the future, we're going to be working with the police services administrator for creating job descriptions for hiring of officers and other capital projects. And that's my report. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
Just actually, one thing I, while I'm thinking of it, and since this is new, bringing on our own force. Once we actually get a force, so this is still six, eight months out, as a, you know, as a council member, and I'm sure the rest of the council and the mayor, I know you'll be coming every month to give us a report.
Right.
But there will be, I guess, nine other officers or so.
Right.
It would be nice if maybe each month you at least brought one, so we knew who they all were.
Certainly, absolutely.
You know, I realize you don't want to have all ten of them here every single month, but at least if they were with you-
Introduce one at a time.
To rotate through, so we would get to know them all.
Absolutely, that's a great idea.
Other than at the town hall, you know, Christmas party when we normally-
Right, I like that idea.
Showing up. So just, I'll just pitch that out there to you.
I'd like to meet him as well.
Absolutely, it'll be done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And up next, we have the volunteer fire company report. Bruce?
Good evening.
Evening.
For the month of August, rescue calls, we had 101 in Carroll, 85 in Frederick, four in Howard, two Montgomery, for a total of 192. Fire calls, we had 13 in Carroll, six in Frederick, two in Howard, for a total of 21 calls for fire. Giving us a total of 114 calls in Carroll, 91 in Frederick, six in Howard, and two Montgomery for 213 calls for service for the month. Also, want to remind everyone that on October 2nd, we will have our Fire Prevention Week. That's Fire Prevention Week, the first full week of October, and we'll have our open house. And so the community is invited to come by for the usual activities, one to four on that day. And I'm also pleased to announce that we're going to be making major renovations to our activities building. It will no longer look like a storage building. I think the community will be very pleased with what we are going to do with it. We're going to extend the front, put a new front on it, increase the restroom facilities, and we're also going to renovate the interior of the hall to make it more modern and more appealing, and hopefully it'll be more of a destination for the people in town, and hopefully we'll get more rental of it. But that building's been, nothing's been done in that building since the 1980s. And so we decided to make a substantial commitment to getting the building fixed up. So stay tuned, I think you'll, you'll like what you'll see.
Sounds like a good plan. Any, any word on how the carnival came out, as far as?
Well, it was like a three-day carnival.
Yeah, I know.
It really came out.
I think that was, yeah.
And it was-
I tried to eat enough funnel cakes to cover things.
Well, you know, we did okay. You know, you plan for contingencies, and it's always a question of what the weather's going to be like. And we've been lucky, and we've been kind of spoiled, actually. Each year we've gone up and up and up in our income, and then this year we took a dive to a little less than half of what we usually make. But as I said, we do have contingencies for that, so we're able to work through that. So hopefully next year we'll have good weather.
Thanks, Bruce. All right. Next thing we have is we have what we call citizen concerns, community comments. This is your chance to address the council. I know Pastor Mark Vauslog had something he wanted to announce. Want to step up to the podium, and I think he had something he wanted to hand out.
Right.
Identify yourself and-
Yeah, my name is Mark, and I'm the executive pastor at Mount Airy Bible Church. Been enjoying getting to know our new fire, or police chief, rather, Doug. And we are planning a special event at our church on October the 9th. We're inviting all of our police and fire and EMT and also elected officials. And so that's why I'm here tonight. We just want to say thank you and let you know that we are appreciative for what you are doing for the community, no matter how you're serving. So I have some flyers here that I want to leave with you. There will be times of recognition. We want, we're going to present everyone with a token of appreciation, and you'll have visibility, and we'll ask that, of course, that you agree to folks who are there. But we just want you to know that Mount Airy Bible Church appreciates what you're doing, and we want to say thank you. So we're inviting you to our campus on October the 9th. There are two different times, they're all on the flyer, so I'll leave that with you, and I won't be redundant. But thank you, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Give my regards to Pastor Walling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Successful year.
Successful year. So I'm Alice Settle Raskin at 1485 Old Annapolis Road, Woodbine, Maryland, 21797. This year, I came to you all in, I believe, April, at the April meeting or May, May meeting. And I let you know about the new 15-week Mount Airy Main Street Farmers Market. Well, I'm here to give you a preliminary report. It went well. We succeeded against a lot of odds. A lot of people said, you know, it's only two vendors, you know, there, there won't be anybody there. Well, we had, on our opening day, a lot of vendors, most of you were there. And we kept vendors every week of the market. We didn't lose a lot of vendors. In fact, we gained 10 more vendors than we thought we originally had. We advertised in Hocomo for Eddies and in two different ways, we advertised the market, and we also advertise for vendors. So that and word of mouth kept part-time vendors, guest vendors, coming. We succeeded in making the market a community centerpiece, creating a one-on-one environment where relationships with farmers, producers, consumers, and the greater Mount Airy community could gather. We built a sustainable farmer's market, creating a viable market that demonstrates the many faces of agriculture with farmers and producers and their locally grown products or produced products, like cheeses. So we had meat vendors, we had cheese vendors, we had bakers, we had farmers with produce. We even had wool products there. So, so it wasn't just eight farmers, one farmer, it was many farmers, the many faces of agriculture. And we produced, I, I hope, a, an economic benefit to the community. We kept the dollars spent local, and we gave the visibility to the Mount Airy Main Street business community. Every week, in the newsletter that went out, I had a "Make It Memorable on Main" tour, shop, dine, and enjoy, and we highlighted a different business in there. We also had, and some of the guest vendors were the restaurants, and even inner escape, inner exit escape was there as well. We are doing some preliminary surveying of the vendors, we've done that, and some community surveying. A lot of them would like it to continue through at least September, if not October. The Maryland Secretary of Agriculture, Joe Bartonfelder, was out with Wendy Peters the other day, who is the Secretary of Planning, and-
Just before the rain hit, I got home.
Right.
I ran back from my office.
Just before you were there.
I jumped on us.
You were there. And Ashley and I got drenched, so, but we enjoyed it. So, so, you know, with Wendy there and her understanding planning, and, and Secretary Bartonfelder, and then the Deputy Secretary of Agriculture and another agriculture rep came, they saw what a farmer's market can be. I had sent talking points to Wendy for Joe, and, and he saw all the events that we had scheduled throughout the season. And he says, that's the way to make a farmer's market zing, is keep on having those events at the farmer's market. So it's, it's, it's everything pulled into one venue. We would like to make it stronger. There are things that we could do. I went to the other coolest small town in Carroll County, Sykesville, the other day, and, and I took note of what they do. They have a huge banner across Main Street there. They have signs, they have flyers, they make the, the farmer's market a community centerpiece. So, so that's what I think we need to strive for, is better signage. And the town and the vendors and the MAMSA and everybody worked together this year to produce a stellar farmer's market. We're still working to make it even better. So I could show you the list, but it got rained on the other day, so, but I will send everybody, everybody on the council the list of what we were able to do, including bringing Wendy and the Secretary of Plan out. So, thank you.
That's awesome. I know that if Bob was here, and it'd probably be something, talk to him about EDC has a budget, and Melissa's not here either, but that might be something that they could look at for preventing businesses within the town. So I look at this as a business.
Right. The other thing, we were, I'm sorry, I didn't mention, we're looking at making it longer. We're looking at a possibility of a winter market, hopefully maybe this year. Winter time can be meats and cheeses, milk, dairy products, breads, root products like, root vegetables like carrots and potatoes, and things like that, and, and jams and jellies. So, and still keep the vibe going, but we're looking for a location as well.
So you're going to keep the market going? You said you'd like to do it through September and October possibly. Are you going to do it for as long as you can, or is there something you needed assistance with the council?
We would like, we're gonna, we're finished this year.
Okay.
Next year, we would like to continue it.
Extend the season.
Right. And then there's been talk about having a winter market with the vendors. The vendors actually suggested it.
Okay.
So, so we're looking for a location. I think Bob is looking into that, Bob and Ashley. And, you know, so we're, we're looking for a location first.
Yeah.
And then we're going to advertise it and see if we can get something going at least November and December, or we're looking at November through March. And we're not sure how frequent, if we're going to do it every week, or every other week, or one, or once a month. So, so, but we're, we're trying to work with the model and change the model as we go. It's evolving.
It's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. It was very impressive. I mean, I, I was really impressed by what I saw every time I went over there.
I'm Dick Swanson, the Mount Airy Main Street Association. She deserves a lot of credit for the success. She, she really put it together this year for us, so we appreciate it very much, Alice. I want to talk a little bit about History 101 coming up next week. And it is an event Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday. And we've got a number of speakers on Monday, the 19th, at Pine Grove Chapel. If you haven't been there, please come down and just, even if you don't want to just check the place out, it is very interesting in there.
And there's a Poké Gym there for people who are really interested.
Well, that's the end of my comments. We're going to have the curator of the Binocesy Battlefield present a talk on the Underground Railroad in Maryland at Pine Grove Chapel on Monday. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we're at the large conference room at the library. Tuesday is National Park Service historian, who's going to talk about the Friedman Schools. If you don't know what that is, see you Tuesday evening. Wednesday, Mount Airy Library, we have the President of Journey Through Hollow Ground Partnership, and he's going to tell us about the road from Gettysburg through Maryland through Virginia. And Thursday, at the library, is Representative CNO Canal to talk about the history of the CNO Canal and its lodging program. And Saturday, here in Town Hall, at 1:30 PM, we're going to have Memories of Mount Airy Past with some of their citizens, longtime citizens, who are going to talk about what life was like in Mount Airy a number of years ago. I'd like to point out that all the talks during the week, Monday through Thursday, are 7:00 PM. Also, we're going to do the scavenger hunt once again this year. And one other subject. On October 8th, we're doing the Harvest Fest Cornhole Tournament over in the rail yard. And given what Amethyst said last month about requirements for a resolution, the Mount Airy Main Street Association would request that the town council pass a resolution similar to the one you passed last month. And allowing the open containers and the boundaries that the Liquor Control Board would approve for that event on October 8th. And by the way, that event will only include the rail yard, three north Main Street. That does not require closing Main Street or having any alcoholic beverages on Main Street. So if you'd be so kind, request, you do that for us.
Yeah, so just so you know, Dick, we have that up for discussion.
Well, actually, that's the ordinance. I think what he's talking about is the thing that we did for, that we're going to do for Beards, Beards &amp; Broths, and that we already did for the Celebrating Mount Airy, which is a resolution as opposed to this ordinance. Am I right?
Yes, because the ordinance would not be approved in time, because it'd be introduced and then passed in October, and it doesn't take effect for something like 22 days afterwards. So this event will take place prior to that.
Right, I actually have on here, if you notice, I added an emergency question mark.
Melissa's in emergency.
Because I wasn't sure.
Four votes and we'll have that.
Do we have that for, it's not based on a percentage?
No, it's four members of the town council.
All right.
You have to call a special meeting.
Is, October 8th, is your, next time council meeting?
It's 22 days after it passes.
Well, you could pass, I request you passing a resolution now.
We can do the resolution.
And let the, let the ordinance take its course.
The ordinance and the resolution are different things. We, we can do the resolution at the next meeting.
Yeah, well, it is, the event that you're talking about, is that on public property or?
No, private.
You can do it. The ordinance is what at least clarifies that you can pass a resolution such as the one that they're, that Dick's asking for. But obviously that's not going to get passed before the event. The event is October 15th, at the Beards, Beards &amp; Broths.
This is the 8th.
They want to have it the weekend before.
He's talking different.
He's talking his.
So Tom, if we pass this ordinance at the next council meeting, which is-
The 8th. Or no, it's the-
It's going to be before the 8th.
First Monday.
It's the 3rd. I'll tell you, hold on. Since we're talking about, it's the, the first Monday's the 3rd.
Okay. So.
Will that cover us, or do?
Yeah, I mean, what I would do is pass a resolution.
Just to cover it?
Yeah.
And the ordinance.
And the ordinance.
All right, can you, I guess, have a resolution drafted up that looks like the ones we've done before for the next meeting?
Sure.
And we'll bring the ordinance up next meeting, so we'll get both passed before your event.
Okay.
That sound good?
Yes.
Now, the good thing is we can introduce at this meeting, because you don't need to have multiple people for it, correct? We don't have that for, for an introduction.
Well, resolutions don't need an introduction.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, the ordinance-
Ordinance is up for introduction.
The ordinance only needs one person to introduce. Actually, one person at a second, which we can do.
Yep. All good. Thank you, Dick.
Anybody else? Not seeing people rushing to the podium? Let's jump into, uh-
The chief has one.
Oh, okay.
Wants to explain something that's in your packet.
Yes, and everybody's packing, you should have a rendition of the new badge for, or I'm sorry, shield for the department. Give a little history lesson real quick. Badge is a sign of authority for sheriffs and so forth. Police officers wear a shield.
Ah, didn't know that.
One thing that $48,000 education Johns Hopkins taught me.
Say that again, say that again.
Is that one thing that $48,000 education Johns Hopkins taught me.
A badge is for a sheriff.
A badge is for a sheriff. Is, is, is for an office. Usually at elected positions such as the sheriffs. The sheriffs wear a badge.
Okay.
Police officers wear a shield.
So would the deputies wear a shield as well?
No, the deputies wear a badge, because it's a badge of office.
Because they, they come under an elected official.
Right, right, so, it's a little piece of information, so. But, but it's for, it's not for public disclosure at this point in time. I provided a copy in everybody's packet, so they can see it. If they want to give me some input, if they like it or not, if they think there's something that needs to be changed, let me know. We'll do a public unveiling at a later time, because we did solicit community input on this design. We did have several citizens that did submit some ideas and so forth. So right now, we're in the process of doing our, our patch and our logo. Some of this will be incorporated into that as well. So once all that gets done, we'll have, we'll make arrangements to have a big public unveiling and, and make a recognition of the person that provided with some information and some concept designs and, and recognize them as well, so.
So would you say, because I know you want to maybe set a date, so maybe if the council has any comments within the next week, keep it open for seven days. If you have any comments, suggestions, please shoot them over to the chief.
I thought it looked great.
Thank you.
I think it looks great.
And your catchphrase, can you say that?
Well, I'll, I'll give a little inside information. It's, our motto would be "Two Counties, One Community."
I love that.
Yeah. Says it all.
Think so. Great job.
Don't do the crime if you can't do the time, that's what I want. I was, it's very impressive, very impressive. And the motto, I, I, you know, I know Bob King called me up, when he saw the motto, he was just, oh man, this is great.
Why don't they want to change that to our four-county thing to that? I think our, it's ought to be considered by us.
Yeah. He told me he's going to discuss that, so.
Yeah, it's great.
All right, Resolution 2016-7, which is to allow alcohol on Main Street for Beards, Beards &amp; Broths on October 15th. We can pass this tonight, so Scott, I guess, is moving it, and I will second it. This is basically the same thing we passed for the last event. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it passes. Ordinance 2016-13, which is to change our ordinance to clarify that we can have beer gardens at town events. I guess we, you can see I had an emergency question mark on here. Obviously, Bob's not here, so that's not an option. I will introduce, as they're second on the introductions, Scott seconds it, so that'll be on next month's agenda.
Tom, one quick question. I'm just going to hand it to you unless you read it over for next time.
Ordinance 2016-14, Budget Amendment to Purchase Police Cars for Introduction. I will introduce it. Got a second?
Second.
Scott, looks like Scott's seconding.
Do you want me to just hold my hand up, Jason?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
The, um, the one I got tonight has a, is updated. The one I got in my packet had a different amount. So is this one updated more accurately?
It was, it was reduced, as I recall. I had that in your packet.
Right.
I couldn't change yours, because you had already picked yours up, so just replace that.
Okay, so this is a more accurate number as opposed to the other one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Here for, it's on, since we've got a second and everything, it's on the agenda for next month. 2016-15, Budget Amendment to Purchase Radios, also here for introduction. Scott's moving it, I'll second it. Ordinance 2016-16, Budget Amendment to Complete the East-West Basketball Court. That is here for introduction as well. Scott'll move it, I'll second it. And when I saw that, I said, I hadn't realized we hadn't finished that, but I-
I thought it was done too.
Was told, told we had not completed it, so.
It was done, Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff?
We were, we were, we put in to have it funded by Frederick County, and at that meeting, I had pulled that away because of all the other counties that need, or other towns that needed to get stuff done. And so this amount was the amount that-
The shortfall, that you needed.
But the work's done.
No. I don't believe so.
Basketball court, East-West park, it's been redone.
I was told there was still, when I, I asked a town hall a couple weeks ago, and I was told it still needed some work.
It's, it's done. I've been out there, been on it, I called the contractor, it's done.
Okay.
All right, well, when it comes back-
It's going to be a game of ball, but the kids look too fierce, so.
All right, and for those who want to know, we've moved the state retirement law enforcement issue off to the, to the November meeting. Health Unlimited, this was their request to revisit their water use restriction, which was placed on their property. When they basically expanded, they were, one of the restrictions we put on them was that they could not fill their pool from town water, because town water shortages, they had to have it trucked in. They're not the only one with that restriction. The Ridgeville Swim Club has the same restriction on theirs when they expanded their pool. I guess we have Heather's report. My understanding how this came about was, you know, from, from a water and sewer perspective, we had started talking about the idea of maybe selling water. And so he was like, hey, if you're going to sell water, how about me? Well, at least at the moment, we're not selling water, we're not moving forward with that, so. Scott?
Just a couple questions. One, I know that in here, the anticipated water demand and available capacity, it says 1.7 million a day is available. What is the amount that is consumed by the town per day, so that you can find out what the delta is? Because I know there was some analysis in here with the numbers, and trying to account for what they're asking for in gallons per day. When you try and amortize it over 365 days, it looks like it's nothing.
It looks, yeah, I, we did, we did that.
But if you're sucking that out in one shot to fill up at one time, it's not. So I would, before I'd even consider doing this, have to know what the supply and demand is.
How often do they actually take it? Is it like some massive draw?
No, no, first I'd want to know, we, we have the number in here, here's what we can provide a day, 1.7. How much do we use in a day? Right? So we don't know that. So that was one question. Then the other question is, did this go to water and sewer, and did they make any type of recommendation themselves on it? And if not, then-
No, we, we have not.
I would recommend it, at least go to them before it even comes to us to deal with it.
No, I think that's probably, this, Heather's report did not come to us. We knew that the request had been made.
Yeah.
But we had not seen any of this report.
It's been stated at this table several times that due to water conservation, that we're actually, our water use is way down, and therefore our income has been negatively impacted. And I think that was one of the reasons for revisiting fees. So I'm concerned, knowing that, and that it's down, why wouldn't we just open this up?
Well, we decided that we weren't opening up water in general. One reason is because we currently are dealing with that water loss issue, which is substantial. Until we know what's going on, we didn't want to do anything.
That's, I mean, that is an anomaly right now. That's an all, the problem that we have to address. But just down the road, and I think it's Scott's, you need to send it to Water and Sewer for consideration, but if our water usage is down, and that's a concern, or somebody wants to use it, open it up for the public pools.
And I think, to be fair, we need to look at what the water use is for both pools.
Yeah, you have to look at for all the pools.
Both of them should, if we're going to do it, we probably need to do both.
Yeah, I would do both pools, but I would also end up asking, is there any other requests that are in the hopper or the queue, that just because this individual came forward-
I see what you're saying.
When I was doing water and sewer, we ended up having a process that was put in place, that people would get into a queue, and based on the fact of where they were in the order, if everybody above them passes on the water, then it's available to them. Just because they came in doesn't mean they get it.
The water allocation.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's a few variables that are just missing that I'd like to know about, but-
Bless you.
So this isn't coming to us, it's just for information purposes? That was the whole point of it being in our packet?
It was Heather's report, Heather's not here, I know Barney knows a lot about it.
She's actually downstairs working on the project.
Oh, okay.
She'll be up here shortly.
So do you want to recommend it to Water and Sewer?
I would certainly recommend we just send it to Water and Sewer.
I would second that.
Any, any thoughts on that, Jason?
My interpretation of this was to see if he, his restriction could be lifted. And this was back in 2005. From my understanding, we don't necessarily have a water concern, and so, I mean, if he wanted his restriction lifted, then my, my opinion was to lift his restriction. But if we're going to send it to water and sewer, then I'd rather just do that.
All right, we'll send it to water and sewer. So, Dick's on our next meeting.
Is there any urgency for this? Good, it's a good process to follow.
We saw the fact that any consideration of actually selling water, that then made no sense for us to have a restriction on water for us whatsoever.
I agree with you.
No, I.
I think everybody agrees. We, we agree. But we have a water commission that can really get into the weeds on that.
All right, we got a supplemental letter from S H A. This is basically our yearly, um.
Standard salt thing?
Yeah, covering our, our ability to get salt and everything from.
Brian is out of state.
I was just saying, did Brian read through it at least, the email and give us if this is good?
My understanding, the only thing that's changed from past years was the price went up.
Right, the numbers, that's it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the terms are the same.
Okay. And do we, do we have adequate quantity that we think in conjunction with this agreement that will be all right? Barney, I'll look to you since Brian isn't here.
Yeah.
Or do you want to defer it? To next month for Brian?
I, I hadn't even looked at it, to be honest with you, so.
Is there any time constraints on the letter going on?
Is this just our agreement that we.
This is just the agreement for the amount.
This is just our yearly standard agreement.
So, let it go, I just wanted to make sure that Brian's feels more good and everything.
We're not committing to buying any certain amount.
If we wanted, this is what we're.
If we wanted, this is what it costs.
Yeah.
Fine.
I don't think we have a choice.
Negotiation.
There's not a lot of negotiation.
Well, state of Maryland, we're going to go elsewhere for our salt.
Good luck.
All right, so, um, I guess we have to actually pass this for mayor's signature. I will move we authorize the mayor to sign the S H A agreement. Got a second? Second from Scott, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like everybody, so. Mr. Mayor, you can sign that.
Yes, sir.
We got a reduction in bonding, M S B Services LLC for lot eight, Twin Arch Business Park. Let's see what, how much that one was. Reduction in bonding, recommended for release.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, three, thirty-five, fifty-five. I will move we release as recommended. Any second?
I'm not seconding.
Okay.
And the reason I'm not seconding, and I'll just say that, is because there's a note at the bottom, if you read under it, that says Carroll County says do not recommend this bond, do not release this bond at this time.
Well, they're recommending this sediment control bond.
I think that's just for sediment control or stormwater management. Actually, I think it's zero.
That's.
Which is, which.
Which they don't have anything there, so they're saying don't release it.
I think they're talking about for sediment control.
I know, but they're saying the release request is the twenty-five hundred, so they're saying that's part of this amount. Right? So, we've already released this according to what I'm reading on sediment control for fifty-four eighty-five.
Who wrote the notes on the last page? So, according to the notes on the last page?
That was our handwritten notes.
Well, they're asking, they're asking for it to have sixty-seven thousand released and county is recommending that five, fifty-four hundred of that might be released.
And our rec, but our recommended number does not include that, if I'm reading this right.
No, we've already released it according to this.
No, that's, that's what they requested. They requested four eighty-five, but our staff put county in it, meaning it's not in their number. Their recommendation, our staff's recommendation is the forty-three, the twenty, and the twenty-five hundred. And you'll see that the two for the county, they, they put county in there, they're just leaving them.
There's only two lineups, except the county generally recommends release. We, we recommend release on the rest.
So, if you add that up, Peter, that's going to equal to sixty-seven, three, three, five?
The total, forty-three, twenty, and then twenty-five hundred.
I don't have a calculator, but.
No, if you got those three up, it.
Is that it?
That's it. That's these three?
So, you're right, they did take it out.
So, we're not releasing that, this, in other words, our number does not include that number, if I'm reading this right.
Right, and that's because of the fact that, so, I'll ask the question a different way then.
Okay.
Forty, fifty-four eighty-five has been released at some point, they requi, they.
No, they requested it and they're not getting it. It's still being held, balance on hand, fifty.
No, no, who, who has that money then?
I don't know, Barney, does the county have that money? Who has the fifty-four eighty-five?
Where's the bond for that?
We have the, we have the bond for those two items.
Right.
Uh, we look to the county to, because they are the ones who inspected and approved.
Right, but that's not, so you say we have the money for sediment control, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so where is it, since it's zeroed out? They're requesting for it to be released.
It just has the worst county, fifty-four eighty-five is still being held.
They, they requested it, but we're not, we didn't include it in our release numbers.
Correct.
Twenty-five hundred is still being held, twenty thousand is still being held, eleven thousand, two seventy.
Yeah, they requested everything and, and our staff denied a good chunk of it.
Staff is approving paving, sidewalk curving gutter, water and sewer, and that's it.
That's it.
So, we're, we still have on hands all the.
Yeah, so you got a majority of the paving still when I read this. You've got over half the paving.
Yeah, we got, we're keep, yeah, we're keeping half the paving. So, we're not, we're not releasing that stuff.
The way I, the way the numbers are shown on here doesn't convey all that, so that's fine.
They, they asked for the world and our staff is giving them about half.
Got it. Then I will second, based on that information now.
Any, any, any further discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Is that one mine, or is that the new one you got here tonight, or did I?
Anyone else?
Okay.
You doing the street closing, Peter?
No, just, I just, I had two copies of the agenda, one was redlined and one wasn't, so, um.
Street closing.
Yeah.
Yeah, street closing for Main Street, beers, beers and brats, October fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Um, I recommend we have the street closed. Second from Scott, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, Bob, I think, really wants the town marketing logo to go next month. So, he's going to bring that back to us because he's not here.
Okay.
And we're moving on to reports.
Okay, ready for the mayor's report?
Yep.
Uh, this has been distributed in the local papers and put on our website, so just back to school safety, remember, kids are out there, please be safe. There's a police force update. Let me see, the notes that Doug was sworn in on August first, he's been identifying the critical needs. Uh, we've selected a candidate for the administrative position. We're finalizing the structure to hire the town officers. Uh, no timeline has yet been established for the conversion to the, uh, resident state trooper program. Chief Rees has been partnering with law enforcement agencies over the past several weeks, kind of logistical issues associated with the trans, transition. We're progressing forward, but we're doing so methodically, uh, so we ensure the highest level of public safety protection possible. I'm proud to dena, announce the, uh, design that, uh, that you've come up with. We've discussed that in your phrase. Revitalization, as you all know, the Mount Airy Health and Wellness Pavilion is now up and operating. It's a great joint venture with Carroll Hospital and Frederick Memorial Hospital. We're very pleased to have them in Mount Airy and all the services they provide. A lot of happenings around town, uh, a lot of them have already occurred now. I'd like to give, uh, Mount Airy Baptist Church a big thank you for their Red, White, and Blue Festival, where they donated eight thousand dollars to our new police force. I've asked Chief Rees to come up with, uh, a specific project. Instead of that going into the general fund for the police force, I'd like for it to be earmarked for something specific so they know what they paid for. So, we very much appreciate that. Uh, don't forget, September twenty-fourth, we have the big annual yard sale up the fire grounds. Uh, and we're going to roll into October soon, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Dick noted the cornhole competition, beers, beers and brats we talked about, annual, uh, Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk, that's a huge, uh, over a thousand walkers will be in that. And, uh, other things going on, Watkins Park Halloween Celebration, gem of the month, just so. A lot of people don't know sometimes what we have in town, and the bowling alley is kind of buried in the back of Center Street, but it's a beautiful bowling alley. They actually have good food, they have craft beers, uh, they have a wine and dine night, I think, for, uh, women on Sunday. Uh, they, and you can have parties down there for kids, it's just, it's almost like going back into the fifties, so please take advantage of, we have bowling lanes here in Mount Airy. Also noted, uh, when our council meetings take place, we always encourage the public to come out and view us on channel twenty-three. Of course, if you're viewing us on channel twenty-three now, you already know that. Volunteer opportunities, uh, I think we're low on water and sewer, Dick, aren't we? We're always looking for people to help out with water and sewer, or you got a full house? You need few, okay. Well, come, come work with the master, Dick, and, uh, and the mayor's forum, I'll be holding a forum September twenty-fourth from ten-thirty. It says two P M, that's actually twelve P M. In the mayor's report, it said, feel free to come on by, and I actually offered the first ten people a free cup of coffee, so. That concludes my.
That's a Starbucks?
That's a Starbucks. So, Peter will be there. Uh, yeah, Starbucks. September twenty-fourth, ten-thirty to noon. Appointments, I'd like to appoint Sean Grattan to the E D C Commission. Reappointments, uh, Bill Budd's Planning Commission, Kenneth Humble, uh, Recycling Sanitation, and Jam Timmerack, I hope I pronounced it.
Jan Timmerack. Jan.
Jan.
I, I will move we accept the mayor's recommendations. Got a second? Got a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That concludes my report, thank you.
All right. Beautification, Parks and Rec, Jason?
Uh, beautification this month, uh, we're trying to discuss, uh, the location of the Blue Star Garden. We're working on that, we're probably going to, uh, put that up in Vest Pocket Park, um, or, uh, uh, I think that's really the main location, so we'll stick with that for right now. Um, we are also working on the ornament for the governor's tree in Annapolis and, um, trying to get that printed out. And then our next meeting is the twentieth of this month at seven P M here at Town Hall. For Parks and Recs, um, Mayor Pat, uh, mentioned a few of, uh, the events, Making Strides of Central Maryland, uh, Watkins Park, October sixteenth at nine A M. Celebrate Mount Airy was a fantastic event, um, closing down Main Street, um, with, with, uh, all the celebrations of the caboose, uh, Larry Hushour, all the great events that, uh, and all the effort that he put, uh, forth. Doc O'Brien coming out, helping out with the caboose, thank you so much to all those gentlemen. We got approval for forty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents to repave, uh, Wildwood, uh, Park Pathway, so we're going to get that done. Beers, Beers and Brats is October fifteenth, um, here on, on Main Street as well, and our next meeting will be this Thursday, uh, seven-thirty P M here at Town Hall. And that concludes my report.
All right, um, E D C, I've got Bob's report here. Bob, I know you're watching. Hope you feel better. All right. Two logos were submitted by Market Works, were selected for submitting to the town council for final approval. Those will be coming forward in another month or so. Andrew Williamson was elected to the chairman's position of E D C for the year. Their next meeting will be Wednesday, September twenty-eighth at seven P M at Town Hall. And moving on to Bob's Planning Commission Report. Planning met Monday, August twenty-third. They passed a conservatory addition on the Lorraine Center. It's going to be a glass building to serve as a senior exercise area. They denied a request for a cabinet sign at Damascus Community Bank. They discussed the downtown master update. E D C was asked to serve as a partner on that process. They worked on the M D X wording for that zoning. They're getting very close to submitting that to the town council, setting up dates for the sign ordinance workshop, which we've all been involved in. Their next meeting is Monday, September twenty-sixth at seven P M. That would be E D C and planning, recycling and sanitation.
So, thank you. So, we did not have a meeting, uh, last month. Uh, we do have a meeting coming up this month, uh, on the twenty-first at seven P M. And I was looking up actually the yard waste collection, because I wanted to tell everybody what the yard waste collection was for this month, but I don't have that in front of me right this second. But I do want to let people know as fall's coming, um, can the citizens please make sure not to blow your leaves and grass into the street in Mount Airy? Just a reminder, not only is it a hazard, um, but it could also be against Carroll County code, not sure about Frederick. But it clogs our sewer systems and fills the community holding ponds with unnecessary trash. So, we just want to make sure that people remember that, uh, when they're doing yard work. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Streets and Roads. I have Ken's report through Bob. Ken gave his report to Bob and Bob passed it on to me. All right, then, the August twenty-fifth meeting. The commission is recommending that a crosswalk be installed on Rising Ridge Road at the intersection of Deer Hollow and Rambling Sunset Circle. Children cross at that intersection, go to school and other activities. After hearing from some concerned citizens in the community, the commission felt it would be a lot safer to cross at that intersection with a crosswalk. What's our, I know in the past, Streets and Roads just went ahead and did those things, at least back when I was on it. If, if the town engineer and the town staff thought that that was invalid location, we did it. But I'm not sure what our process is on those things currently.
I, I think they should recommend, and at that point, uh, they're sending back recommendation to council, council should weigh in, but ultimately, it should come to the mayor to make sure that we first have money in the budget.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
And if we don't, it would come back to you guys for approval or nonapproval.
Unfortunately, crosswalks aren't expensive.
Yeah, so, hav, having said that, if there's no objection, we'll check the budget and make it happen, I certainly.
I, I, I have no problem with it as long as the, you know, the true, um, road guys, you know, who, who know roads and know the engineering, say it's okay.
Well, we're going to defer to Barney as well.
Yeah.
You know, we definitely take their recommendation, we go to Barney, and if, and if all the boxes get checked, we make it happen.
All right, we'll, we'll leave that to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The commission would like to reckon that the money that was not used for the sidewalk project on East Ridgeville Boulevard would be used to upgrade sidewalks on Main Street to make them handicap accessible, uh, for enough room for parents with baby strollers.
And before the council makes a decision on that, just so we can do something for the people in that area, and I, I just always hate not to do anything when they say, you know, we couldn't do that project, but could we do something? So, Monica and I used some of that money and we ordered, uh, flashing speed signs. We have a number of industrial properties at the end of that road.
Oh, yeah.
And we've had a series of complaints over the course of years, so we wanted to do something, so we pulled probably about three thousand out of that, it was small. But, yeah, just, just so everyone knows, we, we did go ahead and make that decision to do, put some flashing, to do something for those people.
You mean the ones that actually flash your speed is?
Yeah, they're solar powered and, you know, they, they flash, and it's just a reminder, because people do not feel safe, and since they don't have the safety of the sidewalk that we thought we could do, that is one level of protection, so let the council know that we, we were proactive and we did something for the folk, so take the remainder of the money and, uh, I think it should be spent.
Yeah, and that's a road that it's, for lack of a better term, it's hard not to speed down that, I mean, that's pretty steep grade down there to the bottom.
You do have, it's kind of vehicle.
I don't go down there. But it is, I mean, that's, you know, for, you're thinking of a big truck going down there.
And sometimes perception is that people are going faster than they are when you're walking and a big truck comes by, so. Yeah, we're doing a little bit for them.
Yeah, sounds like a, sounds like a plan.
Something.
Um, and I, and I suspect that working on Main Street would be substantial expense.
Barney, was there anything else we were going to do for Ridgeville? Remember, we talked about, and the council discussed this as well, consolation for them and.
We were, we were actually going to add the sidewalk to the White's House, for one thing, that ties them into Conestoga.
Is that right? So, can we find out what's left over and, and take that? Because the Whites built the sidewalk to nowhere.
Correct.
So, it'd be nice to tie them into Conestoga.
Peter? Just want to go back when you guys are done.
Yeah, that's it, so if we, just whatever's left over.
All right, Scott?
So, the only go back, I, I wanted to tell everybody what the next yard waste pickup is. It is October twenty, um, sorry, September twenty-fourth, followed by October eighth and October twenty-second. So, I just want everybody to know, the next one, September tenth, or I'm sorry, twenty-fourth, we've already passed the time.
Twenty-fourth, okay.
Twenty-fourth.
Apparently, the new hauler is a little bit stricter on the standards, I'm hearing?
I don't know if they're stricter on the standards, I will comment to everybody that if you do not have your yard waste out early, they will.
They'll come before you get it out.
Yes. So, you need to make sure it's out first thing in the morning. I have seen them, though, go up and down the street twice. I don't know if that is their plan to make sure that if somebody hears them go by the first time, but I'm going to tell you, get it out early the first time, because they may not come back the second time.
I've been known on trash day to hear those guys in the neighborhood go running out with a can.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. But you, so you heard that they're a little stricter? Was there anything that we need to address? No. Okay.
All right, Streets and Roads. Streets and Roads wants to recommend that a crosswalk with a light be installed on Ridgeville, Ridgeville Boulevard at the intersection of Ridgeville, Ridgeline Drive, that's by Arby's. A lot of people cross that intersection going to and from Walmart, it would make it a lot safer.
Comment, and I don't know if anybody else has noticed this, but I've seen twice now, at night, driving up twenty-seven, kids running across the street from Starbucks, heading towards Burger King. No attention whatsoever with traffic. I mean, they're, they're not even waiting for the, the cross sign. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. I would tell the citizens, please tell your kids, if any of you are listening, or your friends, neighbors, do not have your kids run across the street, especially when it's dark, because they're gonna get hit.
They're at the Greg's Driving School, they're going across the.
Oh, that's right.
The kids I saw weren't old enough to drive.
Well, that's because they're taking the driving license.
They, they, they might have been if they were lucky, pre-teen, but, yeah.
That's what I, 'cause I've learned to do.
Okay.
That's right, Greg's Driving School's over there.
Yeah.
And they're running over, yeah.
We may want to say something to them in passing, too, of not having people run over, but it's been twice now that I've seen kids running across while I'm driving up twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's, that's not a safe road to cross. Well, back to this, they, they, they want one at, basically at Arby's to get into Walmart. And there is nothing along there.
There is nothing.
Yeah, but we probably, there is, there are a fair number of people who cross that road.
They also don't have one that goes across for that same intersection for Walmart, across the road. There's nothing there as well.
Oh, well, are you talking about down in the parking lot, or?
Crossing that intersection right in front of Walmart.
Yeah.
But that's private property. I'm not sure how near you're talking about.
It's one forty-four.
But that's what they're talking about.
I see Doc O'Brien.
They're going this way, he's talking about, before you make the right into Walmart, that, that, and then he's talking about this, so it's like a ninety-degree crosswalk.
I don't know which. It's not private property, right?
We need to connect it both ways. Doc?
Isn't that a state highway, and you have to get them involved?
Well, the section of one forty-four is not. They handed that one, actually handed that, one forty-four in town actually is the town's. They handed it over to us a few years ago, but we are so close to twenty-seven that they are gonna, I'm sure, be involved.
There's nothing here, there's nothing.
That's the one they're talking about, but you're talking about here, too.
They're talking this, and I'm saying there's nothing.
We need, we needed to both.
Starbucks is up here.
We need, we need a ninety, so you can go both ways.
Okay, that's what Scott just drew.
Yeah, we have sidewalks, we have nothing there.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I think it's a good idea to put it there. I don't know what's, what is required to do that. Barney, do you have any clues?
We did go to state highway and request.
Okay.
That they put in the walk, don't walk at the intersection with, with crosswalks.
Flash mob, like M M L.
Denied it, basically.
Give me a can of Coke.
Because that is their signal, I think the intersection is ours. I don't know how far off of.
Yeah, I know you go back some distance that they control.
Off of the twenty-seven that they own, but.
Barney, can you make that number forty-nine on your list of things to look at?
Forty-nine, okay.
Forty-nine.
Well, I seem to recall from when I was on Streets and Roads, that we, we had done work with state on that, and the states, there have been quite a few things we've done where the states turned us down, and I think that was one. So I don't know what else to do, we can't do it ourselves.
Why not? Why, why can't we do an M M L? We learned about innovation.
Well, he was, he wasn't an elected leader.
Yeah, we can't, but if a citizen wants to go out there with a can of spray paint, that's what was going on there.
They taped, it wasn't permanent.
How does that integrate with the existing traffic?
Well, I think you'd push a button, and every, and it would go all red, and you'd get a walk thing.
Well, that's fine, if the traffic light gets red.
Right.
If the traffic light's green, and that goes red.
Correct. In other words, you need to, in order for it to work, you have to have the button installed with the, with the, with the, with the walk lights.
There'd have to be a control.
Yeah, it needs to be, when, when there's a light there, you have to have a control intersection. You're, you're correct.
It'd have to be integrated control.
Maryland state law states you must yield to pedestrians in a crosswalk.
Anyway.
Yes, that's true.
So Barney's gonna look, and if they turn this down five years ago, there's no, we can ask again.
Do you have control of Park Avenue, Twin Arch Road, and twenty-seven, with a, you know, a walk through the light?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a, but that's around the other side.
That's twenty-seven.
So why don't we just follow up on the recommendation, and Barney, if you could give a report next month?
It's a crosswalk.
See if they're willing to do it, and what our options are. Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, so, so if the town's willing to pay for it, I think we had to ask if they would do it. So if we're willing to pay for it and just coordinate with them, so it gets integrated into the traffic light.
Yeah, I'd say we'd want to, we'd want to probably maybe look into budgeting it for next year, if they say we could do that, we'd probably talk about it.
Look, shoot high first, ask them to do it. If they don't, you go to option two.
We already did option one.
Then, was new people elected? Anyways, we can talk about it. Yeah, I was gonna say, you can always revisit.
It was within the last couple of years.
So go, go option two, well, well, we will cooperate with the state.
All right.
Which means we don't do anything.
Still on Streets and Roads.
We could paint it, they have to do the signal.
They would like to recommend a crosswalk be installed on Prospect Road at Main Street by the old bank building. A lot of people use that intersection walking downtown, and it would be much safer, and the state definitely needs to do that. I mean, that's, because that's right at Main, Main Street, Prospect, that would have to be the state, I think, on that, right?
Item number fifty.
Fifty, yeah, it was actually on the Prospect Mill drawings to be put in at the top of Prospect, right?
Yes, correct.
That was part of their drawings, but that project hasn't moved forward.
Okay, so that, so that, when that project moves forward, that should get done.
Yes. Do you want to add it before then?
Can we do a simple painting?
Yeah, that's one we're.
Why don't, just can you, can you coordinate with Brian, just to simply paint it?
Do we, technically, don't we have to make both, are both sides handicapped accessible, and don't we have to make?
I mean, but.
We've already done that?
They're both handicapped.
We were required to do it with our Water Main project.
Okay, so we've already done that.
Yeah, and I mean, if it requires anything that really we need to wait for, we don't need to wait to paint.
Do we have to, do we have to get, I know when we've done crossing Main Street, we have to get state approval. If we run along Main Street, do we still need state approval?
For Prospect?
We'll coordinate with them.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Nice.
Op, option fifty.
And we'll get them out there with that fancy machine that they did to do these lines.
I don't think that's what he meant by coordinate.
Okay, that would be Bob's and Ken's reports. Okay, water and sewer. Water and sewer did not meet this month, we will be meeting on October fifth at seven o'clock, and topics will include the one we discussed already tonight, as well as water, other, other water-related issues. Space allocation, task force, we actually had two quasi-meetings. We met and toured the Mount Airy Health Facility and looked at their meeting room facilities there. They actually have a very nice, very large community available meeting facility. We also met with the architects working on the Flatiron Building, and he looked at the, basically the plans that our task force drew up, and looked at them and said, yeah, this is pretty good, I can work with this, so.
With what, what he's doing, proposing?[1679.91]